For you. Yes, last week about this.
Oh, yes.
Okay, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, March fifth. Like to call the meeting to order and if you please stand and join Father John Pullinger for God's invocation. Welcome.
Thank you.
Well, when I walked in this morning, I thought I had it all picked out, but after listening to you for a while, maybe this is more appropriate. The Lord be with you. Lord, make us instruments of your peace. Where there is hatred, let us so love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is discord, union. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. And where there is sadness, joy. Grant that we may not so much seek to be consoled as to console. To be understood as to understood, stand to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, brother.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Have a comment. Seeing none, um, do I have a motion? Have everybody had a chance to read their two cents of minutes? Good catch. Have a motion to approve the minutes from February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Do you have a motion to approve the special meeting minutes? From February twenty eighth of twenty twenty four?
Some of. Say.
And moved in second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Commissioner comments? Um, I have several comments, um, this morning. The Project Concern fundraiser uh, was over the weekend and just wanted to thank everyone who participated in that. We served over a hundred, we served a hundred people um, and raised two thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty cents. So that, um, thank you for everyone that that took part in that to help Project Concern. Um, wanted to thank Neil Wyland at Care Radio. He invited me to join him yesterday on Co-Host Monday and so go over, got over my fear of being on the radio with him and he made it a lot of fun. So that was, that was good. Uh, Senior Village, uh, the sale, we completed that sale last Friday, March first, and had an aunt, uh, celebration at midnight between Thursday and Friday. And so all of us, uh, were able to join. It was really nice, uh, to be able to kind of pass the torch and hear that we're always welcome uh, to watch the progress and, uh, just felt like it was a really positive, positive evening. So uh, and then our annual township meeting, uh, was last night where we were able to get together with all of our township boards, uh, talk about some of the upcoming things, road standards, um, and different things and solicit feedback and, um, Joe Snyder, uh, did a great job building that agenda. We had guest speakers, uh, from LTAP um, and our engineer, county engineer, Puffer Corn Engineering. So I think, uh, the feedback from the townships is they found it useful. So that was, that was good. Uh, Commissioner Reeves?
Um, I would echo, um, everything you said. I would also like to, um, shout out to Mark Zeltner for, uh, FaceTiming me so I could participate from Little Rock, Arkansas, way to actually Senior Village, even though it's only literally, I don't know, a thousand people in my house, I couldn't be there. Um, and I didn't notice until last night. I was looking at the photos and I realized that Mark was gently cradling me. I was the first in my life. I've been the smallest guy in the picture. But I was on the phone there, so I appreciate that. Um, also the township meeting last night, uh, was great. Um, that's the second time I've been to one of those and, uh, the township, uh, trustees and perks and secretaries all the time. They were there. They, they were very participating and they were, a lot of good conversations afterwards. So, uh, that, that's good. I, I almost think maybe we should do that twice a year instead of once a year. But, uh, that's good feedback. So, um, all good. Oh, and I want to comment on the burn ban. We had a lot of questions about the burn ban and, uh, I did, I called sheriff and I just asked him, um, what was based on the reason to drop the burn ban. Uh, and so he can speak for himself, but I'll just pass on it. His process is to check Lenworth County, what they're doing. They rescinded it and then he also called three fire chiefs, uh, two of the rural fire chiefs and the city fire chief, and all three agreed to drop it. And so that was the rationale for when they dropped the burn ban. Uh, and so, um, that's kind of the process that they've been doing before, I guess, and continue to do. So nothing changed. Um, and hopefully we'll get a little rain pretty quick here. Do you need it?
Thank you. Commissioner Noel?
Yeah, I'll echo that. I'll second the motion for rain. Uh, it's getting pretty dry out there. So, uh, that's telling on the roads and the, the dust and everything else that we've had. Uh, yeah, excellent meeting last night. Uh, uh, it seemed like whenever since we've been starting this, we're getting to the point where I think the communication's getting better with the townships. And, uh, that's, that's all a good thing. And then, uh, also the, I'm wishing, uh, Ensign Group all the best on their takeover of Senior Village. Uh, there's a lot of positivity there. Uh, and I, I just thought it was a, a, a good celebration for the, for the handoff. So all the, good luck to them.
Awesome. Hey, um, I, new business. I have a few additions, um, to the agenda that I think we'll just go ahead and take care of. Um, so I have a request for payment for the third supplemental bond, uh, a quarterly payment. For right over here. Okay, this is, sorry. Uh, request for payments from Atchison Soil Profile at the Ballfields for Northeast Kansas Environmental Service for a hundred dollars. Um, do I have a motion to approve out of the Management and Operating Reserve Fund?
Some of, great.
And moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This is three to zero. Okay, um, and then I have a request for payment out of the Management and Operating Reserve Fund, um, over soon as the Atchison, yeah, the Atchison Sports Complex, um, to Allers LLC in Hiawatha for machine use, reloading dirt for fields and materials fees, eighteen thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars. I have a motion to approve.
Is this for Atchison?
Yeah, yes. Atchison Sports Complex.
You spent it in Hiawatha, that was just.
Yeah.
I, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll see.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I have a purchase order, um, from the road and bridge that will come out a special highway. Look for a motion to approve in the amount of fifty-three thousand five hundred dollars for twenty-three point nine dash M dot six bridge removal. I have a motion to approve, and that is paid to Shane Hankey.
So moved, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Hey, and I have a road and bridge purchase order, um, that will come out of professional fees to Puffer Corn Engineering and Environmental for twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for Atchison County Road and Streets Design Guidelines. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some of, say.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. All right. Stacy Waggle, Solid Waste Manager is here to visit with us about the second annual Atchison County cleanup. Hi, thank you for joining us. Thanks for the email with the flyer.
Yeah. Yep, it's good. It's good?
Yep.
All right, well, then I'm done.
Well, I didn't look back.
Oh, okay, well. Um, there's always questions on the tires. That's really confusing. I, I've worded it twice and put it on there and changed it twice and tried to have other people read it and tell me, you know, do you think that's confusing? I don't know how else to put it. So
I, I don't think it's confusing. I think you've, I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Okay.
You know which site to go based on what kind of tire.
Right, good.
Yeah, I thought you did, I thought you did a good job.
It confuses people and it's hard to, it's hard to explain on the phone, even when people call. You know, I usually, uh, do you take tires? And I usually say, what do you have?
Yeah.
Tell me what you had. I start with that as opposed to the whole story of, you know, uh, but.
The answer is yes, because we've got land.
Right, and the hours are different at the different places. So if you go through that whole spill first, then they're confused before they ever start. So, um, but we have a empty trailer.
Awesome.
Ready to go. So I, I don't expect to I don't expect last year, no. We did take out the Sunday. Last, last year we did Sunday and we had three people come.
Yeah.
Two city employees and two county employees over there and, and myself and Casey over there and three people showed up for, I think it was four hours.
Yeah.
We had it. So that's.
But now we know.
Yep, it was a test run last year. We wanted to be accommodating, but after go, being there on Sunday, it, we're like, yeah, this year, we're just gonna stick with Friday and Saturday. Uh, April nineteenth, Friday, April nineteenth, and Saturday, April twentieth.
The store used to be a big day on Saturday, and that's due to be off this last year because it sounds like, I was at a tavern, it sounds like Friday was the big day and Saturday wasn't there.
And the schools participated on Friday too. So we're hoping to get them, uh, to participate again and that was neat to get kids out.
Mm-hmm, girl scout, or boy scouts, or whoever you can get involved, yep.
College is still in session, so you have college kids and so, mm-hmm. Did we reach out to Highland very much on that? Uh, Bees City.
I don't know if they're on your list or not.
And I don't think Highland, that's a great idea as well, I guess.
I didn't reach out to, yeah, Marille involved. I know the.
Yeah, we had, so we have, uh, an email group of all of them, yep, but, um, and we were gonna, after today, once you guys are good with, with her dates and her flyer, uh, we're gonna get that correspondence going to get people heads up and, and on the, on the bandwagon. So, um, question, because you had mentioned the variety of hours of Atchison and Effingham. So both Friday and Saturday, it'll be eight to four. So it's consistent.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which is good. Um, am I remembering, did we do any pickups of trash bags last year? Because I'm, I'm just wondering, because we did a county cleanup with all of us on the state highway and we left our bags. But for ours, for some reason, I was trying to remember, was there a dumpster in Effingham where the kids that picked up around there threw it, a roll-off?
They could go to the Effingham site and throw it there. That's what they did.
Is that what they did?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Yeah, they took it out there.
I was like, okay, so they just took their bags down there. And we still have bags, so we'll be, um, putting bags around for, for folks. Um, Blishmies donated bags last year and we still have them left over. So the schools will get bags and um, we'll place bags, you know, if anybody wants them, we'll have them at the two locations.
Yeah, I delivered some of those bags, and the ones at Marille, they, they still had some left over, so I'll find out if they still have some.
Okay. So, yeah, um.
Hang on to them for next year. They may have used them during the year, who knows?
Right. I'm trying to remember what else that coordinating. And then we'll put the, um, banners up again, which we need to look and see on those banners what the date was last year. Um, because she made them Velcro, so all she has to do is give us updated like dates to put on there. So maybe we can look at that today. All of that's out in the maintenance shop store. So, um, but yeah, that's.
When you were out there the other day, we talked about the lights.
Yes.
And Brian came out, we, I remember I told you we had those fluorescent lights. We were just waiting for him. While as they were putting them up, the uh, were you screwing the lights or it's so old that that was cracking and just falling out? So we went ahead and ordered, um, some LED lights.
Good idea.
And, and so I just, yeah, we, we received five of them. We ordered eight, I thought. So but I talked to Brian out there in the hall and he's gonna come out and we'll get them put up.
Yes, yeah, let's get up there.
Yeah, we'll have to have something, but yeah.
Lights on the outside of your.
Inside.
Inside, they're horrible. It's not a big deal in the summertime, but you know, it's
Daylight today, it's kinda hard. Yeah, it's dark in here. And these LED lights are supposed to be fabulous.
Yeah. Yeah, I was there talking to her, I'm like.
And we were kind of in the process. We just hadn't got it all done yet, but yeah.
And as far as advertising your old trailer, did that, are we?
I sent the pictures. Okay.
Yeah, so pictures.
Uh, is that enough pictures? Is that good enough or is there something else?
Yes, I think there.
Yeah, the pic, I thought the picture.
So what do you do on this, what role do you want commissioners play?
I, I love picking up, like, getting out and be picking up trash with everybody. Yeah, so.
Yeah, same thing you want us to do, or you just tell us, oh, you boss us around?
Well, I mean, we're, we're basically open to take whatever comes in. If you can, I
If you guys would wanna help hang up the banners, that would be helpful. Um, last year Wes and I drove all of them personally. But if we could all maybe take a couple and put them up, we put them in Mascota, we put them in Effingham, we put them in Lancaster. Um, Atchison, the Clinton will put the one up for us on the, um, biaduct so that people can see it. Um, yeah, so that, yep, and we had zip ties. Um, and then if you wouldn't mind helping with the trash bag dispersment too, like, take some, we had some at the convenience store in Effingham and the schools, uh, so maybe we could.
Yeah, because you took a lot last year. That's why I grabbed a few, but you took a lot. You ran, you ran a lot.
Which was, which was fine, but that, I think that's one thing that if we all can do a group effort on that, it'll be a lot.
The ones that were left over at Effingham, I brought back and I think they're stored.
In the maintenance shop. We have them all on the, there's a shelving unit out there. We put the bags and the, and the banners and all.
I gave them to Brian, so.
So maybe we can swing out there if we get done or in time and kind of divvy up, which actually maybe we should postpone that because we're gonna need to get new dates. But maybe in the weeks to come, maybe after one of our meetings, we can.
And that's through Poor Richard's, wasn't it?
Um, oh, no. HB Custom did those. Poor Richard's did our, um, the ones on the old highway that's saying.
The ones that are up now, yeah.
Your, your load or whatever.
That's right. That was the day that you did.
I mean, we're there and I guess we can do that later. So that's the ones, I guess we put it up, we take it down. It's kind of a good rule.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Take them back to Brian.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wherever he had them stored.
Yep.
And you went those up about a week ahead of time?
Yeah, we put them up.
Maybe ten days.
Maybe a couple, a couple.
If the wind's not blowing.
That's all, yeah, that's, that's the game, you know, you gotta time it.
So, so what did we say, nineteen? So, yeah, if we put them up like the first of April-ish or the end of March, it'll be good.
Should we, are they like emailed to the city councils of all the city?
Yeah, we have like a group email that we're gonna let them know.
Yeah.
Yep. So if you guys are good with this, Stacy and I, we're gonna send that today to all the people so that they can mark their calendars and start making plans.
And probably some of those.
Yep.
Um, was it? Can we call it computers on that as well? Is that on there?
It's not on there, but to us, it's just trash.
Okay.
Computers are, I mean.
Every thirty years, so something with a city, the clean-up day, they would do a computer thing and it was like, here is a place.
I've never been a part of that.
Let's go and do it this year then. There's something to look at going forward because I know there's and we, we could talk to Scott about that. I just know that there's places that'll take them, the water. But maybe that's changed. The, the metal spec out of them and stuff.
Oh, like.
Electronics, yeah, mostly.
We've never done that, we just don't.
Not monitors.
I was gonna say the lady that came on Sunday last year, she had a CB and we, I think it just went in the.
Yeah, it does.
And then crashed.
Yeah, so, okay.
All right. Okay, awesome. Yeah, thank you very much. I don't get back.
I can get it.
Do we have a time?
Yeah, maybe.
Five minutes scheduled, do you mind if I use your, before I call you for, thank you.
You, you have this written up so much. I've got several here. Well, I they talk to everybody, so. Stacy?
Yeah.
Oh, good, yeah. It's just the tires, including Ford and large passenger.
You know, I had that one, and I was like, that, and the computer changes.
Yeah.
And I must be wrong.
Yeah, you might.
If it's a computer wrong, then.
My seat, there's the large passenger tires, but you tell me I would almost word it that way.
Okay.
You might make that one change and it'll look good. I just caught that, yeah.
Well, and like I said, I have it that way.
I know.
In the computer and I thought, maybe my thinking.
No, it's the van. Yeah, it should be that. You, you had it right. I just made that one, I, I, I had it working good. I think it's one. I think I've got it.
All right. Mark Zeltner, Finance Director, twenty twenty-four budget adjustments.
So, good morning. Good morning. With the restructuring that has taken place there, I have two budget adjustments.
Okay.
These are not amendments. Um, we don't need to amend the budget in a sense like we've had in the past. Um, we only amend budgets that exceed their levy. So because these adjustments are staying in the general fund, we're not levying any less or any more tax. It's just how the general fund is distributed around.
Okay.
So no amendment needs to occur. It's just an adjustment, um, from what we said was gonna be budgeted per department. Now we're just altering that, um, based on the restructuring. So the first adjustment I have, um, is taking budgeted amounts from Department eleven, which is Emergency Management, and giving them to Department forty-five, which is EMS, for Personnel Services um, and the benefits that go along with those wages. And then rescue supplies, um, being taken from EM and going to EMS. And then I have the documentation that, that backs up those numbers, how I arrived at them, but it's the same spreadsheet that we seen before, um, with wages and that kind of thing. But for you guys to approve it, all you would need is, is this budget sheet.
Okay.
And then the second adjustment I have is splitting, um, Department sixty-five IT GIS into two departments. Keeping sixty-five with IT and we created another Department seventy-five called GIS. Um, based on the notes that was provided during the budget, when we set the budget for twenty twenty-four. I have different amounts here of what was IT's expense and what was GIS's true expense. So, um, in this one, there's, um, wages, some contractual services, trainings and benefits, um, that will be taken out of Department sixty-five and moved over to Department seventy-five. And I also have that documentation to back up the numbers too.
Okay. So as far as calling for the motion, um, Department eleven and forty-five will be merged?
No, we're, we're taking money out of budgeted fund or budgeted budget. We're taking budget out of eleven and moving it to forty-five.
Forty-five, right, okay. All right, so I would look for a motion to approve the budget adjustment for restructuring County General, um, Department eleven going to Department forty-five as presented from our Finance Director. Do I have a motion to approve?
So, second.
Okay, then moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three to zero. All right. And I would look for a motion to approve the budget adjustment as presented from the Finance Director for the budget adjustment for restructuring of County General Departments. The Department sixty-five is being split into two departments. Sixty-five will remain IT and seventy-five will now be GIS. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, just for clarification on that. Because you're starting a new department, seventy creating, but that is still under law.
Correct.
It's just that for budgeting thing, it's budgeted under that.
Right, kind of like, um, how the sheriff is structured, how he has the sheriff's office and then the jail. It's still under the sheriff, but there's two separate ones.
Well, when you said we're creating, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else you needed from us, Mark? I know our next executive session, I have about ten, nine minutes, so didn't know.
I do have a few things. I think I can be quick. Okay, um. Or I was creating the, or attempting to create the schedule for um, the budget with each department head to come before you guys. And I wasn't for sure if, depending on how to schedule them and what time slots, if you wanted them in open session or if you wanted them in a workshop. Um, because in years past, we've done like a workshop towards the end of the meeting and then we just recess or adjourn into workshop for an hour or two or however long. Um, and if you wanted to do that or just schedule them from ten to one and open session.
Yeah, I, I would have a preference. Would they be, would they be more comfortable in the workshop setting to the initial meeting or?
I think the initial, that's where I was going. This maybe, let's do the initial one in a workshop setting and then later when we get things more because sometimes things are thrown out very.
It's brainstorming.
Yeah, it, it kinda gets down in the weeds sometimes doing that and it's more conducive just to do it in a workshop setting.
Are we going to couple reviews at that time? I'm just wondering like what the layout looks like and because being mindful of their time of committing with us, does it make sense to do like a executive session review, then the budget meeting? Like, I don't know, I'm just asking for logistics and, and being mindful of time. Because.
I know we did talk about, last year we talked about having the review. At the same time, they did their budget thing so that you knew it kinda went hand in hand.
What if round one was a workshop format and we could actually talk about the generalities on the review and kind of what our expectations are and talk about their goals and kind of give them some guidelines? Because it may differ a little bit based on department. And then they can come back the second time with the more revised budget and what executive session for the review. That makes sense?
Yeah, no, absolutely. So like, for example, we wanna know, I'm just gonna pick on Scott because he's sitting here, but if we wanna know, you know, what did your ticket count look like in twenty-three versus like those things, then he knows, okay, for my review, I need to have this information compiled.
That's what I'm.
So that, okay, that's a good idea.
That might be more conversational instead of like, I don't know, it's more collaborative than it is.
Yep. So.
Evaluation fact-based.
Workshop first to set expectations, which we should have that meeting prior to that too, so that we're on the same page of what our, our expectations are. Um, but then, so we can have a workshop with them and then schedule that final review, you know, budget, hearing, whatever.
And that budget review can be in the regular sessions.
Yeah, absolutely. I think so too.
Thank you. That'll help me build that. Um, what's our time?
Uh, so you still have six minutes.
Okay, um, I asked you guys last night, I sent an email about an ARPA workshop. I asked you guys last night, I sent an email about an ARPA workshop. That's okay. So the whole, the the point of why I was asking is because I know we we need to really button down a few things before the end of this year. Because they, there's been a couple of different stipulation changes with some rules that came out. So I just wanted to brief you on those rules and then go over the timeline again. So I don't know if we can do that next week.
So I did not realize, I'm sorry, the time is catching up on me. I don't, uh, spring break is next week, so I don't believe I'm going to be here. So if you've been around the meeting, that'll be great.
So do we have time to do that today?
Probably. I don't think we probably need to have, or like I was saying, I think we can. That's so you are in the know of.
Yeah, that would be great. If that's okay with you, I would love for you.
Would be the workshop really is?
No, I think it can probably be.
I mean, open session would be fine.
Okay.
So.
Twenty minutes.
Put that down toward unfinished business.
Okay. The other topic was the Senior Village Funds. If we had a plan for them and or or just to discuss what that will look like, I think that when we receive those funds and we're definitely going to have to leave. I don't know what the plan would look like, but money is going to have to be there in the fund for a while, maybe even six months. Just to make sure we catch all the bills and any fine or penalty that may come up or anything that happens, so.
There will be things.
Yeah.
Is there a statute of limitations on how long bills can set out there without being caught up, you know, so there's
five years for written contracts, three years for verbal contracts from employee.
Okay.
So it's quite a while, yeah.
So I think that will, and we're going to have to leave leave them open, you know, and have some funds available. You know, but that looks like, I don't know, there's a.
And remember, there was the reserve funds that we had. Then we have the Senior Village Fund itself. And then we'll have this this extra payment from the sale proceeds.
And then, well, wasn't, weren't we just made aware of that there was a couple of other things that weren't taken care of that?
Yes, yeah, that's enough. There's another thing, so. The facility did not file their Medicare and Medicaid cost report for the end of twenty twenty three. It was due February twenty ninth of twenty four. It costs about six thousand dollars to file it. Now that we don't have help at the facility, since we don't own the facility, you know, someone there may be able to help give us the numbers, but typically it's the administrator that helps us with filing, because it's like a big financial report of, it stems from, how many residents did you have this month? And how much did you spend on wound care during this time period? And I don't have those statistics.
It's it's to their benefit to do it. I think our agreement says they will help us with that supplying info. Because it's to their benefit.
Yes, right, it is. I asked help from them and I have emails back and forth of they were checking to see what all they needed to do and how to help us and so.
If ever facility is required to do them, I would think it would be familiar with the.
So I was just wanted to bring that up too. I don't know what all that will entail, so.
So regarding the all the money, what happens? I lean towards just if, as the year goes on, can we just use maybe the reserve fund or just one fund where the money gets put?
Yeah, right.
And then
Right.
The one comment I've heard overwhelmingly from people has been, you know, you're going to have a lot of money sitting there. Don't blow it, don't don't waste it. So let's sit on some money, do the right thing, blah, blah, blah. So I get that. So I think I think probably maybe during budgeting in a couple of months, we can talk more in detail, but I think for now, just just stage it, this is my opinion, I mean.
So I was going to try to get clarification on that too, so. Senior Village Reserve that we were using for capital projects, that can be rolled over into our reserve.
They can.
Then you said a Senior Village Fund. Is there anything in that one?
No, that is the negative fund that you have.
Okay, so so would instead of creating a third, would you roll the one point four into this or you'll create a third just to keep it clean? The one point four will go into this fund, a new new account, you'll pay off the negative of the two forty one. Did the last payroll included in this that Jody had to do? Probably not, huh? That was just Thursday's.
Receivables that are still coming in go towards the negative balance. That's one thing I like about keeping that separate for right now.
So we can see what the negative ends up.
Yeah.
Before we do it.
That's right.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
I need two hundred and twenty days, I think, at least to get an accurate feel for that.
Yeah.
And our our PhD billing company is, they're going to stay on and they they're billing for February and then I don't know. I think they bill insurance a month behind, but they bill private care a month ahead. I don't know the whole logistics of it, but they're still billing anyway. And so any payments, I just took a payment earlier that will go in to help offset that. So yes, I can I can totally put in the sale proceed money into a a new fund. So that way the reserves are tracked how they are, that fund is tracked how it is, and then this new can just sit there. So if one fund is negative like that, that's okay before we close out the year because there's other positive funds that would offset that negative.
Right. And keep in mind, on Harvey, most likely it's going to get prorated somehow, and so.
Right.
You might just segregate that if you get another payment. You won't see how that goes.
Right. When that money comes in, the Treasury's Office receipts that into the Harvey Fund. So it may just be better off just to leave it sit there.
Yeah, until we know the number.
Right.
Not trying to play stunt with staff, but is there anything in the Harvey Fund right now?
No, it's zero. Okay. The last, the last time it was receiveded in would have been in January for last quarter. And so Senior Village was definitely entitled to to that. So it was receiveded back in the Senior Village for that one. And then we should get the next payment in April.
And they may be go ahead and prorate it.
Is there, would they need like a final report or whatever that is like to them that saying it's?
Yeah.
The the thirtieth was the last day of ownership. Wouldn't that be a good put forward at least to let them know?
Yes, I think we need to do that. We still have a deed to sign and a that indemnity agreement. And then we'll be, and then to get closed, I think we want to do all those things first.
Right.
While we're on that, while we're on that topics, do you want me to?
Yeah, the the deed, I don't know how much explanation you want, but we were given, I was given a proposal of what they wanted in the deed. And then I prepared a deed, sent it to them, and then the day before closing, they said, no, we wanted to put the state of registration of the limited liability companies they're selling to, which wasn't in the earlier drafts.
Thank you.
Anyway, they thought it important enough to to postpone the closing. So I prepared another deed, the only change to it from what you saw before was first I added in Nevada, State of Nevada for the LLC, and then I also added in the other two, so all three of you were signing it.
Yeah.
I think it was only one.
Okay.
I can't remember. So that's the first one. And then the second one, because we're doing this split closing where they, we've already closed, I guess, but subject to this being done, there's also an agreement that the county is not going to run off with the money and refuse to to finish up. And so that's what the second agreement is. Yeah.
I'd look for a motion. Do you, actually, I'll make a motion that the commission signs the special warranty deed and owner's certificate certification and gap indemnity as presented by the county counselor. Do I have a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero.
Next, sir.
Also, I I would cat to to Mark Seldner for a lot of help in this process. That wouldn't have, we we saved, I don't know if saved because we did not hire outside counsel in this because of the expense. Mark did a lot of the work that would have fallen on outside counsel, I guess would have fallen on me too, but he did a lot of the work of gathering info. I did a very good job with that through this process.
Kudos to both of you for getting us to the finish line.
It's a team effort.
Yeah, so. Okay, so we have executive session, non-elected personnel for one hour, HR, Finance, IT.
One hour.
Yes.
Okay. I'll move the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at ten forty two, and discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy five dash four three one nine B one. And that, and that the purpose of the closed section is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and that the board come out of executive session in one hour in the commission room of the courthouse basement. And those present will be three commissioners, HR, Finance Director and IT. Say it.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are back in open session and we have a non-elected personnel executive session with Commission, HR and Maintenance. Fifteen minutes.
I'll move the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at eleven forty three AM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy five dash four three one nine B one. That the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and that the board come out of executive session in fifteen minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement. Those present will be three commissioners, HR and Maintenance. Say it.
Okay, it's been moved in a second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Hey, Pat, Joe's still out there wandering in there. We're going to have we're back in open session. And Cory sent us in the January of twenty twenty four EMS monthly commission report. I have a motion to approve and file as presented. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero. Here we have an attorney-client with HR and Finance for fifteen minutes.
I'll move the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at twelve PM for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship is allowed by KSA seventy five dash four three one nine B two. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion that the board come out of executive session in fifteen minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement. And those present will be three commissioners, HR, Finance and Community Counsel. Say it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're back in open session. How many minutes?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, okay. Attorney-client, Roden Bridge Finance, fifteen minutes.
Move again.
Roden Bridge Superintendent and Finance Director, Attorney Client. Fifteen minutes.
I'll move the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at twelve sixteen PM for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship is allowed by KSA seventy five dash four three one nine B two. And the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion and the board come out of executive session in fifteen minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement. Those present will be three commissioners, County Counselor, Roden Bridge and Finance. Say it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero.
Kato?
He's trying to help me all he can.
Okay.
He only needs so much.
Gotcha. Okay. We're back in open session?
A little bit. Thank you.
Yep. So we have some time for, I mean, I work festival, Jackie comes, if you want to. And then when Pat comes back, we'll do the resolution. I had an attorney client, but I don't think we need it anymore. I bet Brian about the clock power.
Think you want to talk about?
Oh, that's what, yes. Yep, I had that in unfinished business, but we might as well go with that. Yeah, let's do it.
Which one?
The the ARPA.
Oh, okay. Maybe we can do this today too.
Yep.
Yeah.
But I was going to wait for Pat to come back in.
What do we need to do? Or is it?
He's going to go over the ARPA with us.
Oh, I was thinking. I thought you needed a executive session.
Nope, no, we don't need that anymore.
Before I do that, I sent you guys an email about insurance. So I reached out to K Camp and we canceled the the coverage for Senior Village Facility and the vehicles. And so it looks like we paid Senior Village's portion of the premium was twenty three thousand four twenty seven. So if, I don't know how they'll prorate a refund back, but if they, you know, divide it out by per month and we use two months, two and a half months of coverage, however they want to do it, maybe we'll get nineteen thousand dollars back. I would just go back into the fund and help help our balance there.
That triggered a question for me. What other contracts maybe we prepaid on, anything postal meter to a cable or it could be anything. There's, I found that when I spoke my practice, it's like, there were discovery moments for six months, like, oh, you know.
Yeah, I'm sure there's some things.
My my.
Thumbed through the expenses and looked.
Yeah, because unless you say something, it may never get refunded or canceled.
Yeah.
And I assume.
Subscriptions to software or something, I don't know, it could be all kinds of things.
Utility transfers?
It does.
Okay, so that happened.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, I'll look into that.
There's a lot of little cleanup things and just, right, I do the one that get my upset got on me was I was a year later and our credit card got charged for Sirius XM. What's that for? Well, I kept the old office credit card and we just renewed it. So a year later, I had been paid for the office Sirius XM. Okay, there's another one, you know, so things just keep popping up, you know. You'll think about something like that and it's like, there.
Right. Okay, so. May thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. We had went through this ARPA list.
Yep.
And we had allocated all of that and you guys signed off on it and we got our balance down to zero, that we would expend all of the ARPA funds. So at the time, we thought that's what we needed to do. That's what the rules were telling us is we need to allocate that money. So time goes on. And now we're, we're here today and. That allocation process means something a little different, means you either have to have. A contract signed. That you're going to expense that money. Or some sort of. Proposal that you have approved and the company is willing to implement that. Um. So looking through our list, there, there's things that. Um. Don't fit that. So we have.
Sorry, what day was that list? So I can pull it up just so we can reference.
Like the, the one year?
Yeah.
May thirtieth.
May thirtieth, I found it.
Oh. Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, yeah. Um. So after that, the list kind of changed a little bit. Um, you know, the eighty thousand dollars that we had allocated for the courthouse generator, that price was reduced down to a, a, a sixty thousand dollar number and. We've paid some invoices towards that. So it's kind of changed a little bit, this, this list, but. Where we are at present day. It is, you know, we allocated two million dollars originally for Roden Bridge facilities. Currently. Under the, the rules of allocating ARPA, two million dollars is still on the table. Because we don't have anything for the court, for the land.
Okay.
Um. We may have some drafts or something, but that doesn't matter. Until. There's. A clear.
Got it.
What's happening?
Yeah.
It, it's still on the books and can be taken back.
Okay.
Um.
When does this have, what's the date that we?
By twelve thirty-one of twenty-four. It has to be in some sort of contract or.
So we'll probably need to have a contract with whatever the engineering stuff is later this year for the shop or building or whatever.
Right, right. Um. It looks like out of here. The only other things that we need to, to get in motion is what you'd said, Alan, is the, the. The rest of the purchase for the, the facility. Um. But then there's the graphic panel upgrade from the sheriff's office. The last I knew, there wasn't. A contract or anything with that. Um. They were waiting and they were waiting for, for parts to come in and. I, I just don't know the status.
Where's that on this list? I mean, look at that list.
One seventy-nine, one forty. It's part of the three hundred thousand. The graphic panel.
What land, what land is it?
Um, so mine is a.
It's like down here.
Right above the generator. Okay.
Um. We need to get the rest of the generator complete. I asked Brian just today if he could visit with Gerber Electric. Um, to see where we are in that process and get it wrapped up. Um. Previously, Wes had handled that transaction and so I, I just asked Brian to step in and. See what he can do.
Let me get on the same.
Then that was fifty.
Different.
You're moving forward, do this.
Well, I'm on the five thirty. It's our allocation and tracking. My, I might get the Excel spreadsheet up. Are you sure there's an Excel spreadsheet?
I have an Excel spreadsheet, yeah, but I also have the PDF copy.
Oh, that, okay, that's what's, it looks different.
Yeah.
I'll look at the Excel spreadsheets. That's why I said, I'm trying to find this stuff.
Um. And that ended up being less than eighty, sixty. I have.
Yeah, the generator cost was, this must be sixty-five thousand, one forty-nine thirteen. Currently, we've paid, we've paid two invoices on it so far, so what's remaining is sixty-two thousand, six twenty-two, fifty-nine. And, and I could, I could send you this, this more up-to-date spreadsheet. Um.
So we have sixty-two thousand left to pay?
Yes. For a generator, yeah.
And do you know that's going to be the cost?
Yes.
Okay.
So that is fourteen, eight fifty.
Yeah.
Seven.
So we've got. Hundred and seventeen thousand, oh seventy-eight ninety-one that has not been allocated at all.
Oh, seventy-eight ninety-one?
Uh-huh. Based on what we signed back in May.
Yep.
Hundred and seventeen thousand. Was costs reduced from what we initially said things were gonna cost?
Estimate was here, they came in here, so we've got, that's the hundred and.
Uh-huh. We have extra things.
So of the forecasted expenses, sand's done.
Correct.
EMS remount done. The engineering we didn't do yet.
That's correct.
Lloyd Group's done.
It's not complete, uh, we paid them, um. Each.
Percentage.
Yes, but it's okay based on the allocation because it's a part of the contract.
Okay.
So yes, it's done.
Fire alarm came in right at the.
That's.
City?
Not the hundred and eight, no. The fire, that's where most of that hundred and seventeen come from. The fire alarm actually cost. Sixty-two thousand, two hundred dollars even.
Okay. Um.
Where was that in this X spreadsheet that I'm not seeing fire alarm?
The three hundred thousand.
You say three hundred, I'll see a three hundred.
What do you see?
I want this spreadsheet right here. This is spreadsheet.
Okay, so if you scroll down a little. You don't have an updated one.
This one, it'd be thirtieth. That's the same day as that.
I'm gonna send him the PDF.
Okay, yeah, it's in the PDF. I can't find the PDF and this is not giant.
Yep.
Nothing, it's not here. I'm just, it's not, uh. Was this at the same day?
Mm-hmm.
Uh-huh.
What the heck? What would it do?
Okay, so. And you generate.
There it is.
We talked about Roden Bridge, we talked about, and then the courthouse renovations of the one-on-one, did we take out what we allocated for courts?
Yes, and the appraiser. So that leaves us with forty-two thousand, seven forty-two, eighty-two. Remaining out of that a hundred and one.
Got it. And that's part of the. Okay, so that's not part of the one seventeen, but one seventeen is not allocated.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
And on this spreadsheet, um, I, I, I track the courthouse renovations so separately. Um, and the generator separately and the appraiser thirty thousand separately. So it's all tracked separately too. That make up. That make up these. Remaining totals.
Gotcha. And then the deeds will have a thop out of that too.
Right, which we didn't have a, a PO for that, so I didn't take it off, but.
I should ask Brian.
So besides the. Public Works Building and Land Deal. What's your, what's the amount we have left to deal with? We have got you under contract?
One seventeen, no, seventeen thousand, seventy-eight dollars and ninety-one cents.
Correct.
That's it. Okay, there he goes.
Everything else.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so.
So, the converge ones, and that what we talked about coming from ARPA? That.
Well, I think whatever the RFP for the one-time projects for IT would be a great one.
So that'll, that'll fit right in there too, yeah.
Hundred percent. And his timeline of getting RFP out in a few weeks and then getting the work done June, July, August will be great.
Yes, right now that we don't really have a.
Number.
Number.
But we.
That's, that's.
That could be.
Yeah.
Probably, I mean, give or take a little, I mean, it's gonna be a chunk of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which in a month, we'll know that dollar figure.
Mm-hmm.
And as we go through our budget hearings with our department heads to know, you know, what their needs of one time, you know, things I.
What about this? What's been allocated? Be, be careful because there may be money allocated that comes in under budget. Mm-hmm. So we may end up with some more. So like some of the renovations that Brian's estimated at a certain point is getting cheaper, so we may need to. Ramp up renovations to.
Well, and really get that timeline on the. Purchase of the land for Roden Bridge done.
Yeah.
So that we can do the, in the BG. Um, so that we, we know that it's gonna move forward and then we can start planning with engineer and building phases and contractors, you know, getting it all. Ironed out.
Where are we with that? And then will we have that?
It'll probably their next meeting at this point, based on what happened on Thursday, Friday. Nothing.
So. Their next name or?
City contractor.
Yeah. Um.
I guess it'll be.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, their, their next meeting, they'll have it there.
The city's next meeting?
Yeah, it's in two weeks.
Or, or each.
March eighteenth.
Is it holiday? No, okay, spread eighteen. Yeah. I would, I would, just a guess.
Yesterday afternoon. I saw a copy. I was CC'd on an email from Larry. To his staff. To send me and Richard, Dr. Goodmont. So. I haven't done that yet, but. Okay. But I can make those changes.
Okay. Yeah, and what's the cutoff? What is the city's cutoff to get on their agenda for their eighteenth meeting? Cause we wanna make sure we hit that cutoff, so it's on the agenda, so we know it's gonna be.
Used to be, I think Thursday, it could be different now.
Okay. I might confirm that with Tina, just to make sure we know.
I would check with Tina or somebody, make sure you have his, uh. I may be off a little bit there, but, uh.
Okay.
That's how I remember it.
Perfect. Yeah, cause if it's on their agenda, then we can all rest assured that they're gonna. Talk about it and do one thing or another. And if it's drafted in conjunction with AEDC's attorney, we should be green light all the way around, but.
Else. It all sounds, by the way, it seems like it's all fine, but. There could be some weird tweak or something that no one caught.
And I know Joe's already made contact with BG, so they know as soon as we get signatures, we get going.
Yeah.
So.
But I think our time grid's still good because it's gonna take them. A little time for due diligence and there's a little survey work and. But then let's get that done. It's not real complicated out there as far as what needs to be done, some dirt work and. Get the layout.
Yeah. Time just flies though and getting under contract with people by twelve thirty-one.
Well, I think bigger questions, the, uh, building the building's not a big deal. But getting the sewer line there, we gotta figure that out and that may be a delay and when construction could get done and how it's done and. Says don't know. That, that'd be my question, more about that. Sounds like the water line's right there.
Well, there was. Stipulations that we were to.
Process out.
Um, negotiate with.
Kind of like.
The city on things like, uh, getting electricity there and improvement.
Let's, let's stipulation for that.
So our goal.
Set the timeline.
Well, sorry, well, it's gonna be here, so.
Yeah, yeah, there, there, there may be some others that, that's just there. Because that, so we'll, we'll figure that out. There's, there's a water line there, it sounds good.
Yeah.
Didn't show it on the map I had.
Okay, that's all I have for that.
Okay, so we're gonna sit idle on the one seventeen till we know something from IT.
Okay.
And then. Whatever the difference is, then we can start thinking as we go through the other departments budgets and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. So, resolution number Pat, what will this one be today?
What's this for?
Removing the minimum maintenance road designation from Trejo Road.
We have some discussion on that. I don't know if we should do that until we get the right away, but.
Oh, I definitely think we should do it. I mean.
Looks like you had enough, the approval was done.
Yeah, it's done.
Oh, you.
Walnut Township signed up, yeah. The trustee Walnut looked at it, Joe looked at it, everybody's.
Me, I guess it's like they're breaking ground on a building when you don't have the final contract on the ground.
We don't have any.
Well, maybe we have a email.
Yep, which Pat has now, yep.
But what if they don't sign?
Well.
So what if they don't? You're not gonna give them an address?
There's really, I've been waiting two weeks for when we, let them get these bits signed up on.
I, I mean, I think we should.
I was saying, Eric's saying, you know, let's get. Step A before B, I mean.
I'm, I'm, I mean, with this weather and contractor schedules, they're trying to. Get things going and issuing an address is the holdup and. I think, I mean, the township trustees of the road is fine. Joe said the road is fine. We got a confirmation that we're getting the east easement and gonna get the west from. Mr. Erton, he's just in Lorena, Texas and.
We had a very rapid here saying this depended on. These what's being completed. Is it?
Could you?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm pretty good. I, I think it.
It's better to wait.
Well, I mean, it, it muddies waters and what are you going to do if it doesn't?
Right, right.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
That's my thing, it's like.
Um. Now, there's a. There are really good reasons to think that we, that there has already been a road dedication there. And so, um, I mean, if we really wanted to discuss the meat of that, that should probably be in an, in an executive session, but. Um, so it, it probably isn't technically necessary to have that. It's one of those kind of belt and suspenders approach that if we, we know, we know it's correct if we have both. Um. So I. I, I don't. I don't see any real. I don't have any strong feelings one way or the other. I don't see a, uh, there's no harm certainly in waiting till we have that. There, there is not, uh, a huge benefit either, so. It's completely up to you.
Can those be done within this week?
Well, one of the people is in. Texas and so sending it there and having them sign it, get it motorized and back here for recordation is, would be a challenge. I haven't talked about communication. I've just heard. That they, that they live in Texas. Well, could we, I think we talked about it last night at the township meeting. Declare that it was an open road and go that route, then it would be a fifty-foot right-of-way, I believe, and. And, uh, just declare that it was still open. I, I would feel better.
I think just.
That route.
Two weeks and then we'll pass it. I mean, look, look at these, two weeks, you give them plenty of time, shouldn't it?
If we're, if we're starting from zero, where we're, we're saying that it's not a road and we're opening one, we, we would have to pay. Uh, just compensation under the Fifth Amendment for taking. Um, I don't think that's a situation here because there, because it is a road already. You know, it's on our maps, definitely is a road and. Um. So I, I. Would think we wouldn't want to do that. I think we'd be inviting trouble. Um, because there, there's already a. There's already a road there publicly dedicated and I don't think we wanna go through the process of potentially paying for. That again. Okay, now I'm getting confused because it sounded to me like we. Were going down the route that it wasn't a road, that we were opening a new road and we needed a sixty-foot right-of-way to comply with that resolution. But if the road was already there. And it had been open, all we would have to do is, it would be a fifty-foot right-of-way because it was already. And.
And that's what we were told last week, remove the minimum maintenance road designation from it and they can issue an address and that's what we did.
But, but the right-of-way is the question. I mean, is there automatically a right-of-way if we declare that it was never closed? Your declaration doesn't bear any. That doesn't bear on that issue whatsoever. There's either a, a road there or there's not a road there. There's a lot of, we don't have road records, which we ordinarily have for, for roads and that's, uh. Um. That's surprising to me because, you know, we have. A lot of road records, uh, of very old roads within the county. On the other hand, this, this road is on our map. Um. And there is also a statute that declared. Um, every section line within our county to be a road in, it was just done in eighteen sixties, eighteen, eighteen fifties or six, eighteen sixties. Um. And. I haven't done a complete investigation of. The history of this road, but. I've heard some indication that. As far as some people remember who've lived out there, that it's always been a road. That it has always been treated as a, a public road and that it has been maintained by the township at times. Um, it, it's not a. Uh, it it's not a major road, but it's a. You know, it. Gotten. Graded every.
And thus, it would be if it was a road, it would have. Because of when it was put in, it would have a fifty foot. Right away.
Yeah, um, I did not go back and look at. Whether that statute had. What, because some of them had in there, I think it was two rods. Length or three rods in width, it brought sixteen.
Sixteen foot.
So forty, that that would be about fifty. That'd be forty-nine and a half, right?
Yeah.
So I I I did not look to see what that statute had. I I just. I I didn't look it up. So I don't know what the the width is, and that's the point that we're talking about is, was the width only forty foot, or was the width sixty or fifty?
The engineer recommended we get sixty, because that's. Forecasting the future, what we wanna do is put a process in place and standards in place, and so let's do it right, even though we don't have a process right now, we don't have standards right now. We've talked about it enough that. Doing it. The way we're we're seeing the future to do it. Is is what the suggestion was, which they've agreed to.
And in this case, in all likelihood, they're going to ask to extend that road or add more addresses to that road. Cause even more houses built, most likely, so that's why I go to the sixty foot.
But if we're relying on the sixty foot. I wouldn't sign it until we get the sixty foot.
I I agree, I, we can do that next.
They could tell us one day, and then they cannot sign.
But the, so the frustrating piece for me, representing constituents that are having the holdup is, they show up in January. To ask us how to do this. They followed all the steps, they've hired a contractor, they've built a road, they think they're good, and we're denying them an address. Because we're telling them, we need a resolution to take it from a minimum maintenance road to a road. The trustee of Walnut Township looked at it, signed off on it. Joe Snyder Superintendent signed off on it. The road is there, the people are agreeing to give thirty feet, like, let's.
One piece that isn't there is the hard one.
Solution.
There's been no right of way. That predates this group was told the same thing and never did it.
Okay, so a week ago, a week ago.
Years ago, I mean.
No, I'm telling you.
For a long time.
A week ago, after our meeting last week, we were all on the same email of, let's get this done for them. So here we are a week later, and we haven't gotten anything done with them, except this.
This is great.
So let's hack it, so they can get an address.
Give us, we can give you the easement, and I'll sign that. I I agree with Eric, I mean, it's one step after the other. We're only talking ten days, two weeks, we're not talking months.
We don't even have steps outlined for people. We're just running them, go to the township, get permission, get the standards, what do the road standards look like? Here, let's just send you a few counties of road standards, cause we don't have any ourselves, like they went through all the channels. And the contractor, they wanna break ground. And we're we're the holdup, cause we won't give them an address. It just. It it, from a constituent standpoint, and I'll go to bat for my constituents all day long, like, it's frustrating, because I.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you, but I'm saying.
And and we could have had this done, cause we knew this a week ago, like, hey guys. Now, next week, let's get this done, so we can give this lady an address.
We knew last week that we needed, we needed the right away. We needed last week, I mean.
What have we done to get the right away since last week?
Well, they probably they've emailed you in terms of getting it done.
Well, because we had, we went out and got it in writing, so that we could get this expedited, and not two more weeks, two more weeks, like. Contractors in this weather wanna take advantage of. Of doing it, and.
I don't, I I don't disagree.
It's it's just frustrating, because it's like.
I'm not gonna let me drive off in my car before the check clears, I'm sorry, I'm just, it's like, it's one step.
Okay, so just, so just so we understand. Pat, you also agree we shouldn't do this resolution on behalf of her to get an address today?
I don't have a a strong feeling about it one way or the other. I do want some some. Direction. Um, I don't know, I don't have contact information for. Uh, the only contact information I have for the owners is what we have in the public record, which is just a minimum address.
She's filled out all the neighborhood revitalization, and she she's done all of the.
So I I don't have.
Process.
With the other property owners too, though, that sign off, there's two or three others.
It's just her parents and Mister Ernst in in Texas.
Could we pursue both, you know, at the same time, whether. Would we deal on if if we sign it? And uh, this resolution, but then it wouldn't become, be signed by the landowner for the sixty foot right away? Do we have ground to stand on? With the other direction that we could. Still use, say it was never closed, but it would be a fifty foot right away. Would that change anything?
Yeah, it's just how how wide, how wide the right of way is, and. You know, when when this road was made, they were talking about buggy traffic and car traffic and, you know, not.
Right, it's a new world.
Modern, not non-modern farm, but.
I don't want to. Issue an address, so then have it come back in our face, cause we did it, where there's no way of, we we were already some at uh, assigned the address. But we didn't have title to the ground, or or the right of way. But if if we could. Issue the address based on. The route that the road was never closed, and it would have a fifty foot right of way. And it wouldn't.
Which the road, the road was never closed, declaring it to be a minimum maintenance road did not close the road. So it it's, it was still a road. It. So. We're we're not going from. Not being a public way. At all to to being a road, where. It it's my opinion that it already is a public way. It already is a road. Now, the only question is how wide is the the right of way there? And it could be forty feet, it could be fifty feet. It could be. Forty-nine and a half, it could be, there are a whole bunch of things it could be. And so getting it in writing, then we not, we have agreement with the landowner. And that will, that will take care of the problem of how wide it is.
I guess what I'm trying to get to is. Could we issue the address based on that, and if it's not signed, it would only ever end up being a fifty foot red, because it was never closed?
Yes. Yes, it will still be whatever, it will still be whatever it was, and I can't say that it was.
Okay, because then we we have, I'm, I was under the impression it had to be one or the other. And uh.
That's what assurances we're gonna get the right.
Well, and and so I just wanna understand the process of. If if we don't get the west right away, okay, so. Came to the township, hey, we wanna build a road, so I can build a house back here. What are the standards? The township gives them guidance on the standards. They hire a contractor, they build the road. The road is. Not a minimum maintenance, the road is a nice road. Township trustee said thumbs up, it it meets our standards that. Everybody's gray on what those standards are, but that makes a standard.
Have those in process, we're gonna have those soon.
That's what I'm saying, yes, we're working on getting. Collaboration to get it in writing. Our superintendent said, good, road's good. We got in writing from. The landowner on the side of the road that the house is being built with the address, that. There's easement, here you go, we're giving you thirty foot easement. It's all in writing, it's all. Done on that side. Now, what happens if the west side of the road, there's a hiccup, and there's never. Gonna be granted easement, then does that mean these folks that own the land that just built a road? Can't build a house with an address at their house? Like, this is, because these are the things that frustrate people, I just.
I'm, I was saying that it would go back to being the. Original fifty foot.
That's what I I wanna understand, because that's a lot of investment to then be told, oh, we're not giving you an address.
We're not saying that, we're saying we'll give you the address once he's been signed.
But if it's, what if it's not, it's out of your control, it's not your. Not your land.
Go back and approve it as a.
That's what I'm trying to understand.
Well, I don't know what the likelihood is that the landowner on the west would say, hey, this is not a road, it's never been a road. And you're trespassing, I want paid. Um, is that possible that someone could do that? Yes. I do that, I think they'd win if that case went to a trial, probably not. But I don't know all of the facts out there, and certainly not as many as somebody whose. Family has owned that land for four generations or whatever, and the Ernsts may very well fit into that mold. Is is that possible? Yeah, I I suppose it's possible that somebody could make that claim, and we avoid the possibility of that. By waiting until we have. Clear assurance that. We have acceptable right of way.
But, okay, but I'm trying to understand if we don't obtain that. Then what? She just paid the money to build a road for. For nothing, cause we won't issue her an address?
Well, in that situation, if she paid money to build a road. And she built half of it on the neighbor's property that without permission to do so. I mean, if you're saying that it's.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand, because that was the process. She had to go to the township and get direction, which she did. She hired a contractor, she built a road. The road's finished, now she's ready to break ground to build her house, and we won't give her an address, and.
Sounds like she's better protected by getting these right aways done too. I mean, it sounds like.
I think the public is better protected, everybody is in better, because they know there's certainty, certainty about what the situation is. There there are cases, Kansas Supreme Court cases of situations where there aren't any road records, but. There's a road there, and the Supreme Court is has held that those are roads. I mean, they're all pretty fact dependent, but. And I, but I think that's likely what would happen in this situation. Now. We don't usually. Say, well, let's go out and file a lawsuit to find out, we. Especially if it's something that can be, but there's no dispute about. I've not heard anybody say that the landowner on the west claims that it is a road.
No. You're gonna cooperate.
So. Should go pretty smooth.
So I I would think so, and. If if the the. Problem is, they're saying they only wanted to be a fifty foot right away, and we're saying sixty, we're talking about five feet. On their side of the road, yeah. Uh, that's, it's not a lot of.
Wouldn't it also be behoove the landowner or the person that wanted to build a house that. This is done correctly, and we have the right of way, or else it could be. And it would even go to as far as their lender, about they're building a house on a road that wouldn't even, I mean. I would think that they would want it all, all the. Uh, eyes dotted and t's crossed that. Would the bank be curious to know that they're building a house, it's it's unclear whether they have a right of way to the. I I I mean, you you good, it's. It's entangled.
It it is, generally, people are going to rely on the. The roadmaps that we have, I mean, they're. They're not. Official declarations, but. People generally rely on that, I. I have. I have no idea, though, if what the landowner on the west side claims that this is not a road and that. Somebody's trespassing, that that's. It's a possibility.
We're waiting on that signature is the only thing we're waiting.
Well, you say we're waiting on it, we haven't asked for it exactly. And as far as I know, I I haven't, has anybody communicated with the landowner on the west side?
Uh, she said her dad wanted to do it, they. So. Uh, but let's talk, I I gotta have my head around this process, because I'm gonna rewind it and find out where the flaws were. So when she came and said, I wanna build my house up here, instead of sending her to Walnut Township to get direction on what that looks like in Walnut Township. Sending her to build, hire a contractor and build a road, before any investment is. The the right of way should be number one. Like this, it the whole, it's just like the last time with the plat, you know, they came to the last stop. La, like, that should have been the first stop, so we need to do better, giving people the guidance they need, so that we don't end up. A process they started in January, we're still not issuing them an address in March, because the first piece. Is now the last piece of the hangup. So the right of way should be first, before they go to a township and ask. To build a road.
Right.
I'm I'm asking, I'm walking this through with all of us, because.
Yeah, everybody should start with the road and bridge, E I S, getting that permit application done first.
But there's more than a hundred and fifty years of history of roads existing and being opened and built in the county. When in twenty eighteen, when we received a request from. Walnut Township, when we asked all the townships. Give us a list of roads that you want to be determined to be minimum maintenance roads. This was one of several roads that was. Identified by the township. At that point, we did not. Say, we're going to go research to make sure that there's a record for each one of these roads. And we don't do that. Um, as a. Matter of practice. I I mean, it it could be done. But we don't do that when we have a uh. Um, a culvert that needs to be replaced. We don't, we don't go check that. Frankly, we're we're not really looking for. Problems. And so we we didn't check in twenty eighteen, when Walnut Township told us this road should be declared to be a minimum maintenance road. To determine whether or not there was a road record that supported. It being an open county road.
Township road.
Well, yeah, township road, you're right. I don't see that as a failure by the county to do that, I. I uh.
I think that. I I'm sorry to interrupt, but it would have been at the process when they applied to start having the process done, it should have been determined they needed right away first.
Yes.
Yes.
Because, cause that's the hard part for me, is like, we're we're sitting here, like, maybe, maybe not, and she she's already paid a contractor to build a road. You know, you you, you gotta put yourself in their position of like, darn, I just built a road, and now I. I can't build a house.
You know, in the old days, when they'd have an abstract, and the abstract would be brought up to date, you would look for that to make sure that there was a road. Adjacent to your property. Um, and. They they didn't do that. A title insurance. Has a little different rules about that, they only ensure. For there being a uh. For the, and they ensure that there's access, but they don't ensure for. There being a road where you think there's a road. And yeah, landowner. Who's going to invest. Several hundred thousand dollars in a house. Should probably check those things if it's. Being built on something that's not an established, clearly established road.
Yeah, but also when you go to your governing body and get. Guidance, you.
They got wrong information. Well-meaning, but wrong.
Or wrong from.
Well, they got wrong direction, I don't care who you wanna blame.
Okay, well, we have a.
I don't, I don't.
We can fix this by this resolution, and even if I'm voted down, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution. Pat gave us. Uh, removing minimum maintenance road designation for portion of Trejo Road within Acheson County. Per K S A sixty-eight dash five. One O two, whereas through the adoption of resolution number twenty eighteen dash fourteen thirty-three. The Board of County Commissioners declared certain roads to be minimum maintenance roads, and whereas one such road was Trejo Road. From two hundred and tenth road north into Walnut Township. And whereas Trejo Road is a section line road established under the Kansas Road Law, Chapter eighty-nine, General Statutes of eighteen sixty-eight. Whereas Trejo Road north of two hundred and tenth road has not been maintained by the township for at least twenty years. And has not been regularly used by the general public, and whereas the owner of the property abutting. Said road now desires to construct a dwelling on said property. And whereas in accord with K S A sixty-eight dash one fifteen, the owner of the property abutting, said road has established a maintainable road bed. And drainage in accordance with the standards established by the Township Board pursuant to K S A sixty-eight dash one fifteen A. On Trejo Road for the distance of six hundred and ten feet north of the intersection with two hundred and tenth road. Now, therefore. Be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Acheson County, Kansas, as follows. That the segment of Trejo Road commencing at the intersection with two hundred and tenth road and traveling north a distance of six hundred and ten feet. Shall no longer be designated as a minimum maintenance road. That the sign posted on Trejo Road stating minimum maintenance and travel at your own risk. Shall be relocated to a point six hundred and ten feet north of the intersection with two hundred and tenth road for northbound traffic. This segment of Trejo Road is designated as a township or local service road under K S A sixty-eight dash five O six A four. To be maintained by Walnut Township. Be it finally resolved that this resolution shall be effective upon publication in the Acheson Globe. Do I have, I have made a motion, do I have a second? Okay. Um, it dies lack of second, and. So next steps, can we have the easement? Drafted for next week's meeting to attempt to get a second to pass this?
Well. Yeah, I can send those out even before that meeting. I don't have, as I said, I don't have. Yeah, I can send those out even before that meeting, I don't have, as I said, I don't have contact information for the owners. Um, so if you could forward to me what you, maybe you did forward to me. Um, that might speed up the process, because it'd be quicker to email it and have them print it than it would be to mail something to.
Thank you. Um, all right, sorry, we're a little behind schedule, thank you for coming. Um, we have Jackie Pradon and Mary Jane Sowers with Amelia Earhart Festival for the twenty twenty five appropriator request. Welcome, thank you for the information you sent us.
Yeah, absolutely, hopefully everything was there, if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer those. Um, again, here just to let you know how important it is that we have support for the festival and how important county support, we feel county support is. Um, as you all know, without a carnival, carnival is one of the few things we made money on, so without a carnival. It's that more, much more important that we go out and and raise the funds to keep the festival um, affordable for everyone.
It's not the lack of trying.
Poor Mary Jane.
We tried and tried every carnival.
But the new law doesn't help.
It does not, it does not, um, there are a few carnivals that are still active in the state of Kansas, but many have left. And won't come back, um, a lot of them are are stationed in the southern states and and they do a big swing, and once their, once their. Schedule changes, it's very hard to get a change of act, so um, we'll continue to pursue that, but. In the meantime, um, it's just important, and from the very beginning, the festival has always been about having as many people um, able. To attend it, so we keep as many things free as we can. Um, concert, you know, with the changes we had last year, um, very excited about it, I think it went very well. Um, I know it made it a lot easier for us, um, it it makes it easier for us to. End on an even line, instead of losing money, um, there was no way we could continue out of the lake, so. Um, but we're excited, very excited about Diamond Rio, we've sold, we sold more tickets again last night, so we are already selling tickets online and. And um, very excited about that, excited about our pioneering achievement award this year, she. Um, has quite a story to tell, she um, grew up homeless in foster care. Uh, she actually is one of the people as a high school student that was fortunate to get one of Amelia Rose Earhart's scholarships. After Amelia um, was given the pioneering achievement award, so we've kind of come full circle, she is now a pilot for United. Um, their break off airline, and I forget, it's Sky West, Sky West Airlines. Um, flies in the Denver area quite a bit, and um, so she has quite a story to tell. So we're excited to have her young black woman, um. And let's see, what else we've got, we are planning an event out at the museum on Thursday night, so we're kind of trying to expand, hoping that'll bring, bring people in an extra day. And um. Just lugging away, we're proofing the brochure right now, so hopefully it'll be. Within a couple of weeks, we'll have that brochure out and get it, get it going.
Thursday at the Hanger Museum, what what's, what's gonna happen?
It will be a musical event, it's a string, there's a gentleman in Kansas City that's written string um, music um. About Amelia. And so um, that will be a fundraiser for the museum that's gonna be held Thursday night, so we have already arranged to bring. Like our authors and our pioneering achievement award and those people in early, so they'll all be able to attend Thursday night as well, so. Should be a fun, a fun social event as well as fundraiser and. So yeah, so we're on it, happy to answer questions, whatever.
Do you have any questions?
So the Hanger thing on Thursday is outside of the festival, so to speak?
It is, yes. Yeah, it's their event, right?
And the budget is on entertainment for Thursday night?
Yeah, no, no, that's.
All right, it's great, it's been a great festival, I always support it strongly, so, yeah.
I think it's awesome, I think that uh, all the feedback I got was positive about moving it downtown, I mean, it's just. Easier when you find park, you can do so many things when you're parked in with your family and all the things and.
Just start walking.
Yep, exactly, yeah.
And we heard back from, I think it was really good for the merchants, um, just because people. Hung out downtown a little bit longer.
They, yeah, you spend money instead of waiting in traffic, you're in establishment, eating or drinking or doing all the things, so yeah, it's absolutely.
Actually, the, probably the only prob- problem we had was people wanting to come because they wanted us to just let them come in and eat at the food vendors and then go back out. They, they didn't wanna pay to get into the concert, because they, they just wanna go to the food vendors, I said, they'll be here tomorrow, come back tomorrow. But um, which I hadn't anticipated anything like that happening, but, and the food vendors loved it, because they didn't have to move. They did better than they've done.
Because of that big hill, they had to walk out, out of the lane.
Yeah, so they all did great.
Up that big hill.
Did great, craft vendors were very happy last year, um.
Yeah, it was all positive, I hope, so, thank you, I think so.
Well, Saturday. Stage will be set up, so Friday they have the concert, and Saturday during the day, is the stage being used more?
No, we don't use it, we still don't use it during the day, we still just do the stuff down on on commercial. We don't use it, but we don't have to move it, so our savings there is primarily because we're using one sound company, one stage company. And one lighting company, where before, we had different ones, we had one out there and one downtown, and so that's been very helpful too. Very helpful.
Awesome, thank you.
Are they still gonna have the ribbon cutting at the, the hair, didn't that get postponed?
You know, and yeah, well, and that was a Boeing thing, what happened with Boeing is, well, you know, they've had a little bad publicity lately. And they weren't gonna send anybody for the grand, for the ribbon cutting and the stuff, and so they said, if you, if you can wait. Um, what they, we still wanna have something with them, but for us to have it. Without some of them there, I mean, and we have, we actually have some Rosie derivatives that we wanna have come, so we're still trying to figure out what we can do with them.
I was curious, cause I knew it had been postponed, but I hadn't heard anything.
Well, it was, and it was just kind of there, it's like we have some more important things right now to deal with.
It's, it'll be there till August, I forget the exact date, but the exhibit will be there till August.
Let's know when it's gonna be, I mean, I can make the other one, but it's gonna be scheduled.
Cause I know I had put in, it was conflicted with uh, re- representative. And when I saw that, I'm going like, ah, that's not.
So it was kind of good that Boeing called and said, we're gonna be able to send anybody, so we just kind of said, okay, we'll just open it and. And it's pretty cool, so if you have, have a chance to come up and see it.
You know, I see that uh, Topeka is gonna have their airshow, that would be an excellent place to get uh, publicity for Amelia, that if you can. Get things out, that's like, why are you in the area?
That's right, yeah.
The, this Hanger Museum here, so.
Absolutely, yeah, it's um, it's, as far as the museum goes, business has really picked up, we're packed with schools going forward. I think next week, four, four days in a week, next week they have schools and.
The last, last week, we had one school, sixty kids and sixteen adults. So we, it was, it was wonderful, I mean, it was, the kids just love it.
It's going, it's going well, very well.
But more importantly than anything else, now they've found a plane, we be closing the museum soon or?
We will, we will not, we actually, and and uh, we're actually having a conversation with Tony Romeo and are planning to have him come and do a talk. Just because, just because, he actually, uh, the excitement for, for me was when I actually saw that he had one of our shirts. So, um, yeah, he was wearing one of our shirts on the boat, and uh, that's because he was here two years ago at the festival with his son. And um, bought one of the shirts, so.
Has there been any update yet on what, how they're gonna verify any of that?
He, well, he, they have, obviously have to go back, it's sixteen thousand feet in the water.
They gotta plan a whole thing, it's.
Yeah, it will be probably fall at the very earliest before anything else happens, we had this conversation with him last week. Um, and are working right now, still, I talked to Karen again this morning, trying to get him here, so that we can just have people.
They put a certain time of the year based on seasons too, I think, so yeah, and I know.
And this is also a company for him, so he does other stuff, he's got a job in May in Australia, cause we want him to come in May. He can't, he has to go to Australia, so um, he's kind of using some of the benefits of his company to. To do the search, so we'll see what happens, um, personally, I, it's possible, I think it's highly improbable. An aluminum plane, sixteen thousand feet in the water is not gonna still look like a plane eighty five years later, but that's just. That's just me, so we'll see.
I'm skeptical, but it's always exciting.
Anytime anybody says anything about Amelia, we love it, phones ring and, and people come, so, yeah, she truly is an icon. So, um, I was in San Antonio and had on one of my Amelia shirts, and somebody said, are you from Acheson? I said, yes, my wife used to work there like twenty five years ago, so. Yeah, it is, it's awesome, we're loving it.
Awesome, thank you guys. Now you guys get back to the fun stuff. Exactly.
Gee, you could be a regular here, aren't you?
She knew where the room was, yeah, I knew exactly where the room was. Okay, any other unfinished business that we need to discuss? You don't have anything, okay, county councillor updates?
Um, regarding the tax sale, we, I filed a. Motion for confirmation of that sale, it's set for here in March, March eighteenth. And so after that, the deed should be issued, everything's going according to plan. With that, we started the process of identifying the properties that would be eligible for the next tax sale. And uh, kind of like to get that. Done as soon after the sale as possible, because we'll have to go back and check to see whether taxes have been paid. But anyway, for uh, thinking of trying to get those sent out for abstracting. Uh, last time, O'Keefe Wilson did the abstracting, a hundred and twenty five dollars per. Uh, per tract, uh, they've. They've done it for several years, uh, when we had two title companies, we split the work fifty fifty between the two of them, but. Now we only have one, O'Keefe Wilson has, has done it, uh, we had some talk about. Doing an RFP, um, and I. Really don't like that process, because I have this fear of somebody who may, that I don't have any confidence in their work. Submitting a lower bid and getting, getting the bid for it, um, I'd rather work with. A company we know their product is, we know that. Uh, we know how good it is, and it's, it's generally been pretty good, but I guess I wanted to get more. Direction on uh, whether to start negotiating with. O'Keefe Wilson about doing the abstracting for the next tax sale, or whether you wanted to go some different way. There's about seventy five to eighty parcels that are, who would be eligible. We have a few that uh, still checking on bankruptcy filings and things like that, that. So that's quite a few, quite a bit less than what we've had in the past, that's good trend, so, yeah, it is.
And are we looking to set the date again in February for twenty twenty five, that way we're ahead of it and everybody is aware?
Well, yeah, I'm, I mean, we could really set it just about any time, um. I had several people tell, people that own property, asking if we could have it later because of tax refunds coming in in February. Um, but I haven't heard, haven't had anybody make any comments about it. Um, since then, the, the treasurer's office has suggested having it at the end of the year, November and December. And even in January is, is rough for them, so February would be the earliest they'd wanna have it. I think uh, this time of the year is probably about the best time for the other county offices to have it. So.
Well, and in discussion with the whole group before, when they were talking about pros and cons of dates, like this seemed to be the right date, so if we can just continue on knowing. You know, Feb- end of February, each year is gonna kind of be the, so, so that people know what to expect.
Yeah, that, that's, that's fine, we can sure do that, we can even, we could set the date much earlier than we have in the past. Um, and that's probably a good idea to have, to have that done. Takes any uncertainty out of it, out of the, the place. I think there was, I didn't hear any complaints about it being in the afternoon, I think that was a, a benefit. It cost a little more work, because for the first time in any of the tax sales I've done, we have somebody. Redeem property the day of the sale, and the statute says you can redeem up until the day before the sale. Uh, we just simply um, hunted down the judge and gotten off the cuff ruling, and he told us to accept the uh. The redemption, and so their property was redeemed and taken off on the day of the sale. We'll know in the future that that's his uh. That's his ruling, so we'll continue to accept them up until, I guess, the time the sale starts.
And as far as the title word, when was the last time you checked into?
I think last year.
I was gonna say, I thought we did, and nobody else responded, so.
Right, yeah, I was.
I, I mean, that's what I remember.
I think we stopped the. Well, that may be, I.
You told us you, you had sent it out to your list, and nobody responded other than O'Keefe Wilson.
Yep, look, they're good, are they giving the same fee this year?
Well, I, I haven't started those negotiations with them, so. You, you want me to send it out again, or do you want me to?
Since we sent it out last year, I'm okay with, yeah, I mean, I, it's not necessarily every, every year.
I agree.
All right, I will, I will. With Andrew and, and John and, and see.
And then just one last thing on the, on the Trego Road, cause last week. You were on the email with us, if there's something you need to get something done, such as contact info, or will you respond? So that we know that's what you need, so we can get you what you need to get it taken care of.
I'll do my best.
Thank you.
Um, the individual said that they, their dad was gonna ask for, I mean, is it possible that it's already been pursued?
Yeah, it's been, it's been pursued, like. Tom and Karen approved, and they reached out to Tom and Raina, which I know him, and. He's an elderly gentleman and his son helps him with things, so it's kind of like, if somebody needed to contact your dad, there's a process, it's not like, hey, let me call him, you know.
We just, it's, we don't have it yet, we don't know where it's at, and that.
That's what I just, if you need something, let, let us know, so we can get it to you, so we can get it done. That's, that's the thing, um, okay, any other executive sessions that we need? Um, approval of expenses, so I have a motion to approve this week's expenses. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye, aye, passes three to zero, public comment. Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye, aye, passes three to zero.